And there are two private contractors, one in New Hampshire, one in Maine. They come down here every year, picks up trucks.
Yeah, you called me a few weeks ago.
Yeah. And they use it for three years.
And how much is the new?
So anytime the hay bale comes up, you know, they can't even say. But we're not, we would get all the bells and whistles that the state gets, but still, it's gonna be hard.
But that's no saving.
Well, I'm only scared of two kinds, live ones and dead ones.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so I just let that one go by and it.
The road commissioner up in High Park, he said they've run international for the last 35 years. And they've bought a couple of last year's, they've bought a couple of maps, they don't hold up.
He understood that I was afraid, but it was just a garter sleeve.
He's old, he's old as shit at the 2015. He expects to get another five years.
But, so we have, I have, I took care of cats here.
I would compare high part to our.
And then one by one, they all went through kitty hospitals.
Have the same thing.
Went over the rainbow.
They have an international?
And.
Rainbow.
And after, um, I had no more cats.
Minimal, how do you mean this?
All over my mama. Little garters sometimes.
That's the, of course, Roxbury has an international.
They den up in the winter and then they mate in the spring and then the pregnant female goes to find her place, which is always in the foundation of my farm.
Personal preference and somewhere deuce.
Babies.
Like the, I'll be.
And like out, and you see a straw, uh, stick of grass sticking out. And there's this little baby snake.
If there's a fight, rabbits in the truck.
You know, you're walking around minding your own business and suddenly there's a snake there.
Cassie, you have the same.
They love their town, and they love their town.
When she sees him, she'll scream and that girl has got a voice. And now, but now she likes.
It's horrible.
Yeah, but anyway, I did that and I thought, well, if I named this.
Do you want my notes you can have?
I know, I saw your shirt.
Well, I will take them, yeah.
If I name this.
Cause you called me two or three weeks ago and I appreciate that.
Personalizing.
And I didn't have a lot of thought how I'm gonna talk to them about it.
So I kind of tell myself everyone little story, but I still.
There's two private contractors, one in Maine and one in New Hampshire.
No, it's jarring.
That come down here and buys our state trucks.
But it is jarring when, you know.
Pay sixty, eighty thousand for them, take them back, lose them for three years.
You know, you're, whoa, I get it.
Or some little snake.
I realize, I realize our true is not to be happy with a second hand truck.
Yeah.
But my wallet likes it, my likes them.
So often they break down in the spring.
Why do I, why do I buy a, a car that's two years old, because I buy a brand new one?
So I asked you the question, how long do they last then?
Yeah.
How long? The people that buy it.
They, they, they run it for three years.
Three years, and how much money do they spend? I think you told me to refurbish it after they buy it here.
Very little, because the state takes all the trucks into the shop and they check them all over and do general maintenance on them before they sell them.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Do you know what?
Years. I got the.
You're gonna be.
Planning commissioner.
Hello, I'm ready. The woman is, uh.
Is now head, he's on 66 and, you know, we didn't know that, but we knew the, Debbie and I knew the lady, uh.
Oh, is that right?
Cynthia Brown, worked with Debbie for seven years.
She gonna be all right?
Don't know. Never good.
Where did this all happen?
Uh, McDonald's or the mobile station.
We were there at that time.
Or where are you?
Yeah.
You saw it?
The BA, again.
You saw it, Charlie?
No.
You do.
Well, you might cookie, eat it really good.
I would be proud if we did. I heard the last thing.
Good cookies, you bake them yourself?
Cynthia Brown, which she worked right about 24 years.
Mrs. Elroy baked them.
And.
Just bad, she made.
On my Delmar. And she worked, Debbie, at Central War Hospital for a few years and then she worked.
The white hospital.
We end up.
The white hospital, why you don't, you like those?
Powers to move down state, so she came back and was working it. I love it, I love the white chocolate. I don't need a white chocolate.
You don't?
She's sixties, she's sixties.
Road condition though.
I believe from what I heard last night is the guy running across the Sunday morning. I should text Cassie and say it could be better. She's up there.
Well, I could drive home here, batch up a pour.
Yeah, but.
What? I could drive home here, batch up a pour.
A gentle. You took what?
I could drive home.
Oh.
And get, and get a dish of a pour.
No. Happy New Year, everyone, we're all here and accounted for, call this special order, special meeting of the.
Special order meeting.
Yes.
That's how we're starting out.
Exactly, after a day I had. Um, there is no public participation scheduled. I emailed the manager this morning, getting clarity of what we're talking about this evening, Mr. Manager, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you, thank you very much, good to be back.
No, it's not.
We're having yet another budget meeting, this should be over by now.
Yeah, so I thought we would take this opportunity to kind of do an overview, recap, and I thought I would just briefly discuss about some of the ideas that, in my opinion, were still kind of left open. Plus I have some additional information folks had asked about. So again, from my perspective, some of the so-called open items are the police department, kind of two items there, three items. Um, one is, as you know, we budgeted five officers versus six, so that was a lot of questions about that one. Obviously, that's a very, very difficult one, as we talked about, to take it out, it's very difficult to add that back in the future. From our perspective, we reduced that obviously because of staffing levels and the surplus that we created last year. Uh, the next item related to the police department is the number of vehicles. Typically, the municipality has budgeted for four vehicles. And since I've been here, that's always been kind of a debate whether it's four or three, and that's really a debate for small to medium sized towns. So again, um, what we put in the budget was to, um, budget for three vehicles. I feel at this time that that works. Other minor issue, and I don't know that we necessarily have to really worry about it too much in the budget, but there was the idea, the concept of a signing bonus. Based on the current budget and the surpluses we've had, I think I could, as the manager, work that in and not be a burden on the budget or an impact on the budget. Obviously, we have to be realistic about.
A signing bonus, what do you mean by that?
To try to attract some.
Ah, got it, okay.
It's about you.
I was not following this train of thought, sorry.
Yeah.
Um, some municipalities have gotten all the way up to twenty, twenty-five thousand. I don't know, I think in Lebanon, New Hampshire, they're up to twenty-some thousand. I had last heard it, maybe one of the towns in central Vermont is up to signing bonus approaching ten thousand. Mopelia and others, I think, have four to five thousand as a signing bonus. I think folks would make a decision more on quality of life versus that money, but for a lot of folks, money's in, so. So I think that was the police department. Next up is the ambulance department. As we reported, this budget did increase wages for, uh, by one dollar for the, um, what was it?
Everything except paramedic, right?
What?
Everything except paramedic.
Right, yeah. EMT, A, AEMT and the ER. Still kind of working on what that number should be for paramedics. A little torn on that one, you know, the ambulance department convinced you folks to have paramedic services and they said it wasn't, they wouldn't really be asking for much more money, it was more. An opportunity for those folks to do, um, get their certifications here locally to keep their paramedic service. So, um, still really trying to figure that one out. Last meeting, we did provide a sheet showing wages as compared to other services. Some other items related to the ambulance department are the ongoing, um, pay for transfers. We did, I think we provided information related to transfers. We're not seeing any significant increase and the ambulance director did indicate that, um, there has not been a significant increase in the number of transfers among, above the last couple of years. Basically, what the ambulance director had said related to that or about breaking even, so I guess the question is, do we continue to fund transfers if it's just kind of breaking even? So that, that's another one. I think it was Charlie had asked for numbers related to, uh, runs to Berlin and Roxbury. Was a little initial, initially a little difficult to ferret that out, but we were able to just because of the sayings of code and all that. But we finally did and we found that the calls to Roxbury for last year, last calendar year. Sixty-one calls to Roxbury and seventy-nine calls to Berlin. So in terms of that service, you know, size of a number, probably around ten.
A thousand total or?
Yeah, so we're gonna roughly 10% maybe.
See that again?
About 10%.
Total cost is a little over a thousand, according to the post on Facebook the other night.
Right.
Said about eleven hundred.
Gotcha.
And they're seeing the combination of the two is about 10%. And it's sixty-one and seventy-nine?
Seventy-one.
Sixty-one and seventy-nine, that's what I wrote down, but that's more than 10%.
Well, it's eleven.
Not much, but anyway, you're right. So our, uh.
So as you, if you recall, the current budget, we did increase the per capita rate by three dollars from thirty-five to thirty-eight.
Which is what percent of our overall budget?
Wow.
It's probably less than 1%.
Right, so 10% of our calls are going to, uh, outside the community and they're paying, uh, 1% of the fees, but we also get the revenue from that.
Yes, that's important to make sure you consider that part. But it's more like the ma, the vehicle maintenance and buying a vehicle.
We're in tariffs.
That is the cost that.
For distance, but yes, I have the area, I mean, out of the ten.
Well, yeah, not the distance of it, but what our taxpayers are paying for the vehicles and the, and so making sure that those communities are supporting that to some degree, if they're able to.
Gotcha, yeah.
Keep up with the equipment.
Well.
And wages are also.
It would make sense to me to, when you inform those towns that you raised the cost of doing a business, that you would include that data point. You know, we are providing for Berlin, you know, roughly 5% of, for each community that, uh, of a budget that is, you know. 1% of our budget is, is coming from, you can do the numbers, but explain to them that, uh, it becomes an expense to Northview, which I have no problem with, by the way. It's one ship, one crew, one shaft, one screw, so having a neighbor need our ladder, then that's okay. Yeah, I think we're in a better spot than we were 15 years ago in the payment of that.
Yeah, I think when I started.
Three thousand dollars between the two of them?
Yeah, approximately. Yeah, when I started, I think the per capita was like fifteen, thirteen.
Yeah, I think before that was even lower.
Oh, yeah.
I remember eight dollars.
Four digits at one time.
And Lydia's brought this up many times, we don't want to impact the budget, but at the same time, if our costs are going up exponentially, we need to be fair to our taxpayers also. And we need to keep pace of what that, those, when I said what the burden rate last year, this is what I was driving at.
Okay.
The stuff where I think it's close to 5%.
That's what I think, I was trying to make my machine work.
The ambulance, just the ambulance department is roughly seven hundred and thirty-four thousand with capital N, O and M. So if you take thirty-six thousand divided by seven thirty-four, it's just about 5%.
Five percent. But the total runs is what we were coming up with, the total runs over 10% are 13%. According to my calculations from the data that I saw on Facebook the other night.
Yeah, we were just comparing that to how much revenue they're giving compared to the budget.
Yeah, it seemed to us. It's 5% or less?
Well, Jeff said 1%, I think initially, but he was just, yeah, trying to guess.
Yeah, but it's 5%, right? Of our total budget, still.
Ambulance budget, total ambulance, not, yeah, yeah.
Remember you're talking more, you have to be exact.
Well, that's good though, because.
Absolutely.
We have to pay exactly, so we should understand it exactly.
So let's just take this discussion a little further, Laurie. If we did bring it up to the 10, 13%, what would the fee be?
Well, 10%. I mean, it's probably three thousand.
How much?
I mean, 10% would be doubling it.
Yeah.
5% is thirty-six. 10%.
So, you know, what I was getting at, what the cap per cap of the rate would be?
Oh, so be, um, wow, yeah. Hold on. Seventy-three thousand, that would be.
Yeah, well, it's up there.
Well, actually, maybe we might open thirty-five to forty instead of thirty-five to thirty-eight.
Well, this is what my, my drill is about.
Get the numbers, so.
And then there's how many, uh, how many actual, what do you call it when you ship a patient? Transports. How many transports come out of those numbers? Does every one of the sixty-one that come to Roxbury have a transport or is there a lift assist?
Yeah, or something.
Right, no transport at all. Yeah, no.
An actual call that's the fee.
Get staff to manage that, cause it's, we have to watch our pennies. If you take care of your pennies, the dollars take care of themselves, you know? It's, I think I quoted Elroy on that.
Well, it's basically going, I was just looking at each one, I mean.
So our per capita is what now, right now?
Our, the budget proposed was thirty-eight, so it'd be seventy-six.
Thirty-five, we increased it to thirty-eight.
Why can't we increase it to four? We could if we wanted to.
So seventy-six.
I'm only.
Increase it to forty.
Yeah.
One.
What'd you say?
Forty-one. So where does that leave us?
It leaves us with a better, better handle on our police department.
Yeah, let me do a better job, let me throw the dart on the wall and see where it lands.
We're throwing our money for them.
We propose.
Well, actually, it all goes to the ambulance.
And the money. Forty, increasing it to forty would add nine hundred and twenty, uh, nineteen hundred and twenty dollars in revenue. I mean, there's only, we base it on six seventy-eight for Roxbury and two eighty-five for Berlin, because we only cover part of Berlin.
Yeah.
So we're only billing nine hundred and sixty-three per capita between the two of them. So every dollar is nine hundred and sixty-three dollars that you increase as far as additional revenue.
Well, I'm in favor of increasing it, all you do the dirty work.
I'm in favor of increasing it too.
I'm not against increasing it, but I think we're, we need to let them know where our thoughts are. We can increase it next year to bring it up smoothly. I'm a whole, I'm 100%, this is what we started the discussion many moons ago, so you better tell them that.
I have, well, I've had, they asked, I had some preliminary conversations, they said, hey, we are increasing it at this time, draft budget is up to three dollars, they said it could go higher. And I did preface it saying, um, this is, uh, we've been increasing it on a slow pace over the last few years to, in fairness, and not to over, you know, to overburden your, your budget. And I said it's still significantly lower than that of other agencies, and they said thanks, so, but I will definitely give them.
An explanation of what we're, how, what our approach is, I think, with this new fee, and then, that also includes, we're gonna be tracking, uh, all services. Mutual aid is mutual aid, so, but police and ambulances. Ambulance generates revenue, so it's a little bit more complex. So if we're going to continue having these number of calls, we have expenses we have to pay for, but it's the same thing, how many calls does the police go out to Roxbury? How many fire calls are there out to Roxbury? Get the staff to recognize that we need to know those numbers. It just, it's good business practices to know how your money's being spent.
Yeah.
Especially when we go to these communities asking for more money.
Right.
We have a complete story to tell.
Right, you know, we're eating mutual aid, whatever it is.
Yeah, mutual aid is, it shouldn't be tied to this, because.
Okay, we benefit, the town benefits, like, all towns benefit.
Right, yeah, I mean, they come to us, we go to them, you know? Whereas there is no ambulance service in there, that's why they're paying our service for that. We're not doing things on ledger anymore, we're doing things with databases, so it's nice to have that data.
So other items.
Well, let's finish this one.
Let's finish this one, yeah, I, I wanna argue in favor of raising it because I think their expectation should be that it's going up. Everything else is going up, eggs are going up.
And it's, and it's an important service for them.
It's a very important service and we're still way below what they're, and we have staff who are looking for, you know, they're already working for, they say they're working for less than other people. And they feel like they're, they're not making as much money as they could. We've given them, I've got some, uh, some opinions about that as well, but I'll leave that for later. I'm just saying, they, the residents of Roxbury can't expect that this service will not go up when everything else in their life goes up.
Well.
I feel like a patsy if we don't, if we don't, if we don't raise the rate, I feel like we're patsies for them.
So they started their budget season with an understanding from what Jeff said, that there's gonna be an increase in ambulance. And I presume you gave an estimate of what that was going to be?
I said, the initial amount was three dollars per capita, but we're going to revisit that and it's likely to go up higher.
Okay, good. So this forty-one proposal translates to what?
What do you mean translates?
Well, I'm trying to understand what, yeah, per capita.
How much additional revenue?
So forty-one dollars is the per capita rate that he's proposing, and where are we at now?
Oh, thirty-five.
Well, thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, so three dollars.
Currently.
So we aren't raising it.
No, no, the current is thirty-five.
Got it.
The proposed is thirty-eight.
Got it.
And now we're talking about a new.
Forty-one, so a six dollar increase, got it.
And when did we increase it last year? We went from thirty-two to thirty-five, yeah.
So a six dollar increase is 20%, right?
That's kind of steep.
Looks deep.
But again, as compared to other organizations, it's still, be careful everybody, it's, it's still quite a bit lower.
And going to Roxbury beats up the ambulance is more. Well, I think that's what Lydia was trying to say, that it does affect the vehicles. Are you saying Tracy Hill is a tough road to go up?
And then.
Not debating that one, wasn't it?
Roxboro, then they're done.
Roxbury, yeah, bro.
So is the board in favor of adjusting to forty-one? So that's a, that's pretty much a six dollar increase versus a three dollar increase.
Twenty percent is too high in my estimation.
I agree.
And so less than that.
Would you stop forty?
I like what we did, just three dollars. Yeah, three dollars.
I don't think that's enough.
Ten percent.
I don't, I don't think that's enough.
Okay, but with this, I think we need to express where we're coming from and what you can anticipate next year. If there's an alternative, then they, that gives them time to assess it. What would happen if they said, we can't afford it, it's too expensive, and they just stop paying any? Or we're still gonna respond?
Yeah, there's some debate as to whether ambulance services are illegal or, um, required to respond.
Right. You have, you know, once I get down.
Can they go to White River?
What?
Can they contract with White River? Maybe Roxbury.
They can contract with Beretta. They can go with Mopelia, like they did the school.
Yeah, and I think that's.
Very talented.
That's what Jeff is saying, that Jeff, we're, it's double the cost.
Yeah.
And I think when we initially discussed this increase a long, long time ago, they, they realized how good of a deal they had.
Yeah, well, I mean, I like, I like giving people a good deal, I do that all the time in my personal life, but I think in this case, I feel like we need to. Uh, we need to be more realistic, we need to be more advised by the realities in the rest of their lives.
So let's, let's, so the three, the six dollar increase is going to affect our revenue, how much?
It's so small, it's nine hundred something per dollar.
So it's going to affect their expense, how much?
That's five thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars, so you said forty-one? I lost my page.
I agree with that, it's very normal, increase to ours, we're not dealing with it properly.
Oh, six dollars, sorry, I was drawing a blank there. So it's four thousand sixty-eight dollars to Roxbury?
Additional?
Yeah.
Additional. Total.
I mean.
I'm looking for the additional three dollars.
How much more?
More over the budget Jeff gave you or more over what they're paying today?
So what their, what the proposal was, so forty-one, so it's a three dollar difference, that's what I'm looking at.
From thirty-eight to forty-one. So Roxbury is six hundred and seventy-eight, so times three is two thousand thirty-four, more than the two thousand thirty that we already increased it, or proposed it.
See, I don't think that's unreasonable.
I don't either.
When you reduce it that way to six hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
And I, I think this is, I've been appreciating your columns in the paper, and I think this is a column in the paper.
Oh, now I have a deadline tomorrow, so.
But I mean, explaining to people, you know, in the context of where other, what other towns charge and how many, how we want to pay our people and how much.
I look at it this way, six hundred and seventy-eight dollar additional fee for a community, just like our nine hundred dollar fee, is pretty small overall. I don't know what their budget is, but.
I'm missing the six seventy-eight, she just said it was, uh, twenty-three hundred today, didn't you say?
No, I asked specifically, how much more is the three dollar increase above the proposed three dollar?
And I said three, two thousand. There's two thousand, um, two thousand thirty-four dollars.
Is, is the addition?
Is the addition, yes.
So...
We build in six hundred and seventy-eight per capita.
Sixty-eight.
Yeah, so six seventy-eight times every dollar we increase is six seventy-eight.
That's where I get the six seventy-eight, got it?
Yeah. So it's two thousand thirty-four dollars.
Yeah.
More than the two thousand that we put in.
You're talking a little bit...
But that's split between... That's just Roxbury? That's just Roxbury, okay. Berlin, we build two hundred and eighty-five per capita, so the additional three would be eight hundred and fifty-five dollars to Berlin. On top of the eight hundred and fifty-five we already increased. This is also such a small part of our budget.
We're talking pennies. Let's just go with the original, I guess. If it's going to be such a burden.
My second bet, go with the original thirty-eight. Within ti- with the notification that next year it's going to be different. It's going to be a bigger number. Just give them a heads up.
Yeah, it's fair and reasonable.
They, they, they can go out and look at the numbers again.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not like we get to talk to them every, any time during the year. You only have to talk to them through Jeff.
White River would be about forty-nine, because they're distant.
Forty-nine?
About forty-nine dollars per capita.
It's more than that, you say?
I think it's over sixty.
Yeah.
All right, next item on the agenda.
So, did you want to stick with ambulance, or did we...
Yeah, well, we should.
Yeah. I was looking at the wages and just averaged the ones that we got in the wage...
See, all right, have a good meeting.
Yeah, all right, I hope so. Have fun at your meeting.
Have fun at your meeting.
What did you say?
Oh, I was just looking at that. I averaged the numbers that we got, which maybe somebody else already did too. I threw out various cities, because theirs was this flat rate, because it's, I forget their situation, volunteers, whatever. I threw that one out, because it didn't seem the same as the others. But, um, the V E F R average of the three, Rutland, White River, First Branch was fifteen sixty-six. So in that one, we're above average.
Mm-hmm.
EMR, we didn't have numbers. The E M T, that average, again, I just did the three, Rutland, White River, First Branch, was twenty. And with the dollar increase, we're at eighteen. A E M T, there's five examples that I used. East Montpelier, Waterbury, Rutland, White River, First Branch. That came out to twenty-one fifty. And we're at twenty-one with the initial increase. And then the paramedic, again, was five numbers. That averaged to twenty-five forty-two, and we are at twenty-two, because we haven't decided on any increase yet.
Twenty-five, twenty-two, yeah.
Twenty-five, forty-two.
Twenty-two, okay, there you go, thank you.
I just thought that would help me look at it more.
Yeah. No, it's a good way to look at it.
Because we were often trying to find ourselves somewhere in the middle of the range.
So Northfield is competitive?
Yeah, I think the thing that we don't have as much is more of a increase in compensation for increased education. So at the higher end of the education bracket here, we're below. And at the lower end, we're on the high side. So, maybe that's how we want it, maybe it's not. But it did seem to me that the paramedic specifically was low. And the E M T looks a little...
So is it because we just pay a flat rate, and we don't pay based on education?
Well, we've got three that are flat. The V E F R, E M R, E M T are all the same.
Mm-hmm.
They all used to be the same rate until, I think last year was the first time we changed it to, um... So it all used to be one rate.
Including A E M T and medic?
Right. And all used to be one. And then, I think last year...
The medic is fairly new, paramedics are new.
Right. The twenty-four, twenty-five, I think, was the first time we, first or second year, that we changed it per level.
Second.
And it's all part, in my mind, this is all part of the, like, it was a volunteer system previously in the past. And it's moving towards a professionalization, professionalization of this area of service. And I think that is a force that's happening much, you know, outside of Northfield.
Oh, I agree with that.
And we just have to figure out how we're, you know, how are we gonna... Because if we jump too fast, it is such a shock to our system that we can't handle it. But we also probably can't not shift in that direction, is my opinion.
Yeah, you know, and the other things, I'm kind of getting ahead of myself here, but the other things you have to worry about, when you start going more towards, um, a full-time or more of a professional, other things come along with it, you know? Then they start asking for extra vehicles, they ask for the facilities, ask for higher pay. And that's understandable, but you got to be careful. That kind of creeps up on you, and then, you know, you build something much larger than you originally had or possibly need, so...
Well, you know, when I became an E M T, it was a six-week course. It was, it was a most rudimentary course, but I got the patch. It was part of my job. I was getting paid for it the whole time, by the way. That's not the case. These guys are putting in lots...
Five thousand dollars, isn't it?
Yeah, she says what they said.
And it's a lot of, a lot of hours, and it's, it's a new language, because it's, and I have the physiology. So you've got that. So it's one thing to have an individual dedicated, so, of course, you want to encourage them to do that. And, uh, so once you get them there, okay. And then, on the high-end side of things, the paramedics are new. And they started off with saying, you know, pretty much a baseline, this is what we'll do, we're not going to ask for much more.
Yeah, and that's...
And now they're...
So you get the foot in the door.
For much more. And we don't have to have paramedics. We need to have the ability to, uh, call somebody in. These guys are dedicated to making Northfield safe. I have great respect for them. So we're, we're going to find a balance, and we are going to have to build a new facility as well. Because you have, you're, oh yeah, you're, uh, you, you are complying with regulations now. There, come January twentieth, regulations may go by for training. Who knows? But I don't think so. You've got training, you've got...
Well, I, I think Nor- Northfield's been fortunate over the years. They've had, um, a fair amount of volunteers paid from Norwich. And I think for those folks, um, it wasn't necessarily that, uh, worried about.
Seuss, Seuss, no, I don't think it's Seuss, I think.
Thank you. So...
Just in time to talk about it.
And as far as facilities goes, you're, you're going to end up, uh, building something for the ambulance guys to get away from, out of a floodplain, and, uh, into a place where they can park their gear, and you're going, and they're going to have to use for training room at the top of the fire department, eventually. It's only money, guys.
With all due respect, potentially a lot of money.
So...
A lot of it, no.
How many people are medics on our staff right now? How many people are paid that amount of money right now?
Paramedics?
I don't know a lot, stop me.
Yeah, we have to...
Because I, I'd read them by number of rounds.
Well, that's even more important then, because if we are having a larger abundance of medics...
Yeah, I mean, we can get those numbers for next time.
Well, what I'm trying to say is, um, it looks like we're fairly in line with the A E M T. And we're, you know, two dollars short on the E M T. And we're two dollars in change short, no, we're...
A buck fifty.
We're a buck fifty short on the medic. My question was, the buck fifty, how many hours are we paying for that?
I think it's more than that, that we're off. Two...
So if we're at twenty-two...
Twenty-two to twenty-five.
To twenty-three. If it's a dollar addition, oh, well, you...
We didn't add anything yet.
We didn't add anything to the medic, so it's actually three dollars, you're right. It's three dollars in change, yeah.
Are we, it's Northfield comparable to those other facilities?
That's the other, like, it's hard to make these comparisons, so...
We, that one's a pretty good city.
Yeah.
What's that?
I was just wondering, uh, Northfield compared to the southern municipalities that we're comparing. But looking at Rutland, so it's pretty...
Potentially looking at Waterbury is a good example of a similar community. And those...
They have a larger services.
Yeah. And East Montpelier?
Well, the good news is, we're not that far away from being within the range of the middle range right now.
Yeah.
So I think this was an important exercise to do, to show it. So are we going to go with the management's, uh, dollar for the E F R, E M R, E M T, and A E M T?
Can I, I'll interject for a second. If we're going to do it based on, then why would we pay, uh, the E F R the same as the E M T? Because it, that's like, there's a, there's a...
Entry level versus...
Right, I, I don't, I...
Emergency...
I would think we would not increase the bottom one.
Yeah, we didn't, did we?
Um, I don't think we did.
Okay, so...
So just E M T, not...
E M T's increased by a dollar?
Yes.
And A E M.
So from seventeen to eighteen, from twenty to twenty-one. So my wage comparison doesn't show any changes?
It's just because this was the current, but Jeff and Laurie had already told us in the budget, this is the way it is now, but the budget already put in the one dollar. But I didn't realize it was not including that.
I didn't write the notes down.
Um, I, I definitely think that we should up the medic at least a small amount. Because it's weird to up the other ones and not...
No, I agree.
Up that, like, acting like there's no difference. At least a dollar, yeah.
So, let, I know you all, I, let's go back in the context of these increases at, plus the facilities, which we really realistically have to talk about. Can we go back and look at this, uh, charge to, for other communities? Mary is never going to pay for, it's never gonna, it's not going to pay for it, but we need to move faster than three dollars a year.
It's insignificant, really, impact on the budget, it really is.
But we need to move faster toward parity.
Well, I think it goes back to, it goes back to
Well, we can't...
where our focus is. This is what I tried to say when we added the third ambulance, is what is the focus of the ambulance?
Yeah.
The focus of the ambulance department should be the, the care and transport of the Northfield residents. That should be the main focus. And, um, I think if we maintain that, we will be fine. It's expanding services is where we could get into problems.
Yeah. On another...
But I, I really feel that this service is important, but it doesn't need to be the Rolls Royce, but it does need to be better than a Ugo.
And we need to, do we need, how much of an issue do we need to think about is retention? How many?
Well, that's a good point. I think the, the, the one thing that I take away about Northfield, we're very fortunate to have Norwich University, and we have a clean class, uh, or, we, we have a, how do I want to say it? We have a class that comes in every year.
Yeah, so that, that means we have the, the E F R's potential constant.
Yeah, and I think the director, you know, said that that was a great thing, and that some of them may advance their career here.
It's wonderful to have that, but it's also important, I mean, at least, I think. If I go down, I want somebody with experience to come and help me.
Well, I think it's true.
And I really appreciate having that influx of folks, but I don't want it to come at the expense of appreciating the people who are kind of, the ones training them, the ones keeping that going. I really want to make sure that, and that we want to retain some people. We obviously need to grow our population too. And, uh, if we can retain folks to live in our town that are Norwich grads, then that would be a fabulous thing too.
I agree, I agree. So it's a tough one. So we're going to amend, uh, the dollar to, um, to the medic?
So we'd be at seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty-one, twenty-three?
Yeah.
Seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty-one, twenty-three, that's what that got.
It seems within reason with what, the information that we have.
I would say it does. Seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty-one, and twenty-three.
If they have
Is proposed.
Other information that they want us to consider, if that doesn't, then I'm happy to hear more, but...
I think this is good. Okay, next item. The ambulance, is there anything else in the ambulance to discuss?
I think we covered it.
My understanding that Central Vermont Hospital is no longer an inpatient hospital. Does anybody else know that?
Oh, for...
Something.
Mental health issues.
Yeah, for some things.
For some things, because I happen to have a patron on one of the volunteer things I do that needed, uh, what I considered to be routine inpatient care, and it had to go to Burlington. So, that's another thing to consider.
Reduction of services is happening everywhere in healthcare.
Right. So, uh, transportation may be a thing that, uh, we're going to be doing more of.
Is this a plan?
That's, well, that's, we're going to have to react to that as it develops.
Okay. Yeah, I guess just additional items, minor issues, uh, the board had talked about increasing interest income. We currently have a revenue of thirty thousand last year, I think. It was kind of a, a blip where it was...
Are you out of ambulance now?
Yeah.
You're going back to revenue?
Yeah. Unless there was more anyone to chat about.
My favorite page, look at that, I would have a ruler on it.
Back to revenue, is that... So again, at the, at a previous meeting, uh, the board suggested we take another look at the amount we inserted for interest income.
Which is, is that a number?
Page four.
There it is, forty-seven then.
Yeah, so we inserted thirty thousand on twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, jumped up to seventy. But it's not quite a favorable industry.
So, well, is your, is your balance in your bank account on up or down?
Well, there's been some influx, but, uh, stayed relatively stable. Lori, I don't know.
Well, we're, every year we're spending surplus on the budget. And, uh, as of January one, we just dropped our interest rate slightly.
How much?
It's approximately three percent. You have to, I have special, I need access to that money at any given time when the... You have to, I have special, I need access to that money at any given time, and that's, so we have a very good arrangement there.
So your, your interest on your long terms dropped, uh, three percent.
No, actually, that was the, I, we have a nine-month CD and I can't, it, it's above three, don't really drop it, I don't know. Um, that one did not drop, because it's locked for nine months. The, the floating, the, um, just our daily is dropped. I think it was three point three to three, roughly.
And how much of that is, uh, investment? Percentage of all the money that you have that's earning interest? How much is your floating compared to that? Twenty percent?
Um, no, on the nine months, I probably have higher than that, I probably have almost fifty locked for nine, but you, yeah, that's not all town general. We, we have one and one, but two bank accounts, one bank account, all funds. Which gives me the ability to, um, you know, invest, because I'm talking to the bank at a much higher number. I'm talking at five million or six million, not a hundred thousand. Because it's made up of all the funds, including ARPA. I have part of ARPA in that nine-month CD, I have part of ARPA in the daily. So that we can.
Gotcha.
Deal with that. And then, if the CIP needs money, I can, I internally, because it's one bank account, I don't do anything at the bank, but I can move money from the CIP, um, into the town general, to pay bills, or I can vice versa, in between, even in the CD. Because it's just an internal transfer.
So the question was, we had seventy thousand in interest, why, why the drop-off? And is thirty thousand a good number? Is that what we're talk, discussing right now?
We are discussing.
Typically, with budgets, you, you underestimate a little bit, because you're just gonna be safe.
Yeah, so do you feel good about the thirty thousand?
I'd be comfortable with bringing it up to, to forty, but no higher than that.
You're fifty perc, you're thirty percent, thirty-five percent is fifty percent of that, of, of seventy, right? So.
And we don't know what, interest rates are gonna keep coming down, I'm fairly confident of that, so.
So we're entertaining increasing that number, is that what we're saying?
Right, yes. I wouldn't, from my perspective, I wouldn't go any higher than forty.
Twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three was forty, so.
Yeah, that, that's where.
Prior to that, obviously.
Yeah.
Whoa, whoa.
But you look back to twenty-one, twenty-two, and.
Yeah, twelve, thirteen thousand bucks.
Yeah, but interest rates were near zero.
Right, and you didn't have ARPA funds in there.
No, ARPA, ARPA is its own account.
Separate.
Oh, yeah?
Not here.
Right.
Yep.
But you're here, Lori, I'm sorry.
Well, that's all right, so we still, we do have, when we talk about interest, um, I had the upper sheet, I think. We still have bonuses. Well, that was November, I haven't added December interest, hundred and thirty thousand dollars in interest earnings.
Right.
On the ARPA funds, that is nothing anywhere in this budget. That's the ARPA.
Money in discussions.
So that, that hundred and thirty thousand is, right, to be discussed.
Right, and you've never kept, alright, so that twelve thousand in twenty-one, twenty-two doesn't include any in the budget. But then again, we're borrowing money at one point four percent, so. So forty thousand is the number? Lori, I, I heard.
That's what we were, yeah, that's what Jeff and I discussed, yeah.
So line item forty-seven, ten, twenty-five, twenty-six goes up to forty thousand. For revenue, yeah. Okay?
So I think those were the, mostly, from my perspective, the one items that were clearly, um, outstanding or needed some attention. I guess, then there's the overall question, this budget tax proposed. Um, it's calling for seven point, seven percent increase in the amount to be raised by taxes, is that, you know, I think the board needs to think they're comfortable with that amount, but.
Well, we sort of glossed over the police department issues that you brought up, we haven't had a discussion.
Right, so I talked about those earlier, so.
Well, I think we need to revisit that discussion.
Yeah.
Before we get into the seven, because I think it's gonna be a lot higher than that.
Okay, so I, I just, those, again, I just wanna give a quick summary of the things from my perspective that I thought.
Well, there's also discussion that I promised the board we do, about economic development, because we have not talked about that in a session. So can we do that on Thursday?
Yeah, absolutely.
So you're hanging out with the police department now? Is that the one you're gonna do next? Well, those, there's two major items in the police department. Reducing it by an officer and reducing the vehicle.
Which is what's in the current.
Which is in the current proposed budget. Are we comfortable with that? And the, the seven point one four percent rate increase includes reducing the police officer.
Correct.
That is correct.
And what does it do to it?
To put that.
To put that stuff back in.
Hundred, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars was the last number I heard.
Yeah, I think it was a hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty thousand?
Roughly, if, I mean, a police officer with a family plan is a hundred and fifty thousand. And then, one officer is in, is only in at nine months. So it's four officers plus nine months is the budget you have in front of you.
Yeah.
So that would be, I think that was another, um, approximately thirty thousand to bring the nine months up to a full year, would be another, I think, thirty to thirty-five thousand.
So that's a hundred and eighty, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand. And how much, and what do we raise? Any raises?
Uh, thirty, thirty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars.
Could you be a little bit more specific, a little bit more accurate?
Thirty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
So that's five percent.
Enough about the vehicle. The vehicles.
Yeah.
How much?
Fifteen.
Not as much.
So, the vehicle seems easiest to deal with, so let's talk about the vehicle. So right now, we have four vehicles in the fleet. Our proposal is to reduce it to three.
Or for funding. For the time being, fund just three.
And how would that affect the force?
Under current staffing, or even bringing on one or two people, I don't see that that would have a negative impact. If you went to five or six officers, well, if you went to six, clearly, you know, it would start to impact the, the department. But with, uh, the chief and, say, three officers, four officers, I don't see that in.
Does the chief?
He's comfortable.
Is primarily have a vehicle designated to himself?
Correct, with the understanding, if we had a vehicle go down, that, for the time being, that he would drive his, his person.
And get reimbursed?
Not to, yeah, we would talk about that, yeah.
Still a cost.
Yeah.
Page is, uh, so we see P.
The CEP is fifty-four.
Fifty-four. So what savings? It's, what would the savings be in the budget per year by eliminating a vehicle?
Anywhere from ten to fif, or eleven to fifteen thousand.
Well, that's for CEP, but how about operational costs?
I think it would be very small, just because, you know, you're not driving that, all those vehicles, you're just driving some.
So if we increase, so if, yeah, so if we needed to bring another vehicle in, so the impact on the budget, uh, let's say we made a mistake and we needed to add the fourth vehicle back. It'd be approximate, obviously, the initial cost of the vehicle, and then fifteen thousand, let's call it twenty grand a year.
Yes, twenty year to properly fund it on the CIP.
It's easier to add in a vehicle than a, than a person.
Without it, no. And we've been, we, you know, I look at this, and we've been eliminating this, this, we've been reducing the force for three years, pretty much, I mean, we.
Correct.
If the chief's okay with three, then I'm okay with three.
Vehicles.
Yeah, he, he is fine with it.
Yeah, see, that was a simple one. What say you, Charles, and Mary, and John?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I'm good with three vehicles.
I knew you'd be, John.
Charlie's.
I like my rolling inventory. I like my rolling equipment. You're referring to.
For you have to.
And we've got seventy-two miles of road, twelve of them are paved. They get beat up. So what impact is it going to have on coverage with the force we have now?
If that people can drive them.
That's my point. Is there an impact?
On.
Is there an impact?
Like.
With the force we have now, if we reduce the vehicle?
No, absolutely not.
But if we, if we, and let's just, for the public's sake, how many police officers do we currently budget for?
Budget for, or half?
Budget for.
In the, in the current operating budget, for, yes.
Yes.
Five and a half.
Five and a half, in this budget?
Well, what is, well, five in a few months.
Four in a few months. Four and nine months, in, in the proposed budget.
Right, right.
We just.
Four and nine months, okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Previous to that, how many officers did we budget for?
Five and.
Nine months.
Yeah.
Almost six. So we're going from six to four.
Just, just under five.
Nine, yeah, yes.
And what do we have right now?
How many officers on, so, three?
One compromise, potentially, would be adding in the thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars to make it the five even, so that the budget doesn't dip. Because we're, part of what we're trying to avoid is a shock to a future budget, that is. Yes.
And also, yeah, also.
That is very good point, because if, if you, even if you decide to go with five, we're not budgeting five in this budget.
Right.
Yeah, so because one is on.
And your proposal would be, what did you say, thirty?
Well, the, I mean, I'm not, I'm just thinking out loud right now, not strongly behind this or anything, but I'm saying, if, I think what Lori said is to move the nine months up to the full twelve would be an increase of thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars.
Thirty-two thousand, three hundred five thousand.
Alright.
So, if we added that back in to.
So we'd have five instead of six?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, and if you eliminate the twenty-two explorer, you've got ten, nine, you get eleven. So, if we reduce the three vehicles.
We've already got that.
We already reduced.
So we're not saving that. Right.
The proposed budget is only three vehicles, already, it was four, Jeff proposed three, yeah.
I'm clear on that.
So there's no cut there, it would be that you wanna add it back.
My bad, wrong line.
But if we add in the full, a hundred and fifty thousand, plus the other, we've added in a handful of other items.
Right.
I don't know how much that already increased where we started from, not.
I'm looking forward to getting that number.
Huge amount.
Yeah, so we're gonna pass that out, if we have a draft, we'll give it to you for, uh, Thursday's meeting.
So I like that proposal, making it a whole five.
But it's just paper, you guys, really.
It is.
But it is.
But we can't find anybody.
But it gives the chief lots of nowhere.
But if we did, if we did find two more people, we would then have to go to the voters and say, we want a hundred and eighty thousand only. It would be more than that in the future, we'd be asking them to add in two hundred thousand, say, to the budget, in the future.
If we found three.
Why would we?
If we went up to six.
Why would we ask him to find two more officers?
That's what our chief said, though, when we asked him, is six what you really want? And what we really need, and he said, yes. He didn't say, it's great with five, or it's great with four. Six is a full department. If we stop funding for it, and then we wanna add those in, the voters are gonna be like, what?
They're gonna be less like, what, than, than they would be if you asked them to do other things, like even pay for the school, they love to pay for cops. The point is, if we ask for more cops, we end up putting more people in jail, more people in the court system, more and more and more. It's in, and, it, it, the premise is false, because it's based on the past, it's not based on the future.
Right, but Mary, what we're doing right now is funding five, which isn't even fully funding our department. So.
I mean, the, the.
And, and if you've got the five in there, and he doesn't get the five, there is somewhat of a surplus that you're building into your budget.
Yeah.
So you have that bit of a buffer, but if you have a, uh, if you have the need, because whatever happens, and you now have a crime spree, he's got a budget that can get another cop in here, he can, uh, and, yes, we will send people to jail if they start breaking the law.
Yeah, y- y- your assumptions are that if he can get another cop, and he can't, he can't, they can't get officers anywhere.
He will have.
Even with twenty thousand dollar inputs.
He will have his, he will have it in his budget, that he can get part-time cops. That's where I'd like to see it. You, you, so you.
We could also say, put in, instead of thirty, put in fifty, and have that be the signing bonuses, too.
Well, the manager, I thought, said he could work a budget, what, what was that?
We won't worry about that, then.
Yeah.
Oh, maybe we should open Pandora's.
Well, the signing bonus would be over, you know, a couple of years, we'd obviously, we would not, the municipality would not get the full amount in front of you.
No way.
Give a third.
Here's, here's twenty thousand bucks, have a job, oh, what do you mean you're leaving tomorrow?
Yeah, I mean, that's exactly.
So, so say, you know, the chief was talking, you know, maybe six, so, you know, it'd be two, 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 so.
Okay, so then they have to put in.
So my point is.
But we put that into our, we put that into our negotiations, that they would get in, they would get increases in the future if they stayed longer.
Right.
So I don't, I don't know why we're reopening that can of worms.
Well, this, I, I do it a bit separately, this is about trying to draw people in and be competitive against what other municipalities are, are doing.
But those municipalities aren't getting any officers either.
Well, well, you don't spend it if you don't get some.
I'm getting conflicting reports on that, Mary, I'm hearing that they are getting officers now.
It's getting better.
Yeah. The state police especially.
And it was the thing that chief sounded the most, it sounded like it mattered to him, and he wanted to try that, so.
Yes, I agree.
Because, I mean, as the chief said, or does he have a, what, I mean, I know overall, the entire nation, law enforcement is an issue at the moment, but is there any particular thing with Northfield that makes it harder? Our cops always work, our police officers always work solo, or, like.
Right, and he mentioned that, something like.
Is that a downfall, or is that what other towns are like, or do the police officers normally work solo? Is that different for Northfield? Or just, is there anything for the town of Northfield that is different than any of the other towns? Or is it just the overall law enforcement is an issue everywhere?
My takeaway from the chief's presentation was that Northfield has a lot to offer in being a police officer here compared to even burying Ormond earlier.
That's what he.
That's my feeling, but.
Yeah, no, and I agree with that whole argument.
You, you don't have the homeless issue, you don't have.
Well, I'm not saying what the issues are, I'm saying, that's what our chief is telling us.
I'm telling what he's saying.
No, I, but I'm not going there.
Okay, all right, good point.
Don't jinx it.
Yeah, so anyway.
So a compromise would be adding thirty thousand back into the budget, making it a full five instead of four point nine.
Well, that might be symbolically important.
Well, I think down the road, too, it's, it's a long-term thing, too, um, that we're not slashing the budget.
Yeah. Yeah, not to state the obvious, and we're kind of balancing that off, you know, with sizable, two eighty surplus, yeah.
Understood, that's why I asked for those numbers last meeting. So can you add that to the budget? What else, Jeff? Your list. Those are the things, I think we've accomplished your list.
Yeah, I think we've covered pretty much everything.
Right, so not bad for an hour and five minutes.
So Thursday?
We're gonna talk economic development, we're gonna have an updated, we're gonna have an updated sheet.
Of the, of the changes so far, yeah.
So adding thirty does, takes it from seven to what?
Thirty two thousand is a full penny, so...
So, so percentage wise, is that the same, is a penny a percent? Because you started off the percent...
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half?
Well, that was, not cents, that was...
Percent.
Percent.
Yeah, that's what he's asking, Jeff.
She printed the numbers, I can hear him, I can hear him cracking.
Roughly eight point five, eight point six percent, but there are other changes.
There are other additions, maybe, it's not just that one.
So I think we'll have a further discussion on that number at our next meeting.
I have one other thing to ask you to clarify for me. Are these people, the, these new hires that you're talking about, are they poaching from other offices? Because that's what it ends up being, is...
That I can't specifically tell you myself.
Yeah, with, with pulling...
Poaching, where you take them from one office, one department?
So in law enforcement, that was probably three, two and three years ago, that was becoming a huge issue, that was happening quite a bit, and Northfield, unfortunately...
We lost.
Yeah, right, I think two, two officers went to Berlin.
My anecdotal evidence, Mary, is the following.
Yeah.
The police academy enrollment is almost doubled for officers.
That's a good, that's a good indicator.
Over the last year or so.
Yeah, it got so bad two or three years ago, they, they...
So Professor Clemens is now the chairman of the...
Training council?
Training council.
I did not know that.
Yes, the governor appointed him about a month, what, it was about a month ago?
Yeah.
So I had a conversation with him.
Yeah?
And he was giving me that...
He, he was giving me that stat.
That's very encouraging, because it was...
That's very encouraging.
Chronically low a few years ago.
So...
It takes time to build it back.
Right, so I think it's happening. And I, you know, I've watched the news and they have those graduations, there's a lot more now than there was two years ago.
I was very, I'm very encouraged to hear that Bill is doing that. I, twenty two years ago, I went through that police academy, and I can tell you, there were so... I was, my eyebrows were up here the whole time, and just...
In a good way or a bad way?
No, I was shocked.
Okay.
I was shocked, and, and I think there was, there's plenty of room for reform. Now, that was twenty years ago, so we'll see. I think it's encouraging to me that he's there.
Yeah, I was, I was pleased with this one, I guess his wife kicked him out of the house.
She did, she probably wanted him to retire or, I don't know, she's been...
I'm old enough. So, move for adjournment.
That's you?
This is budget. Move for adjournment, we don't have to wait for Mr. Morris.
Motion to adjourn, second?
Moving seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No!
The motion passes four to one. Charlie, you're more than welcome to stay until twelve to nine.
Oh, sure.
I need to stay warm, it's going down.
Do you want to Minnesota joke?
It'll be a fun market tomorrow.
How cold was it?
Papa?
Where?
It was so cold, I...
Coffee place, there was a coffee...
I saw two dogs jumpstart her.
Which is just a bunch of different things. They're not anything for sale as much as it is for dental.
My dog today wouldn't, yeah, they don't, wouldn't go out, it's like, I can't, that's a bird. She, I got her down by the esoteric temple and she just started putting up paws, she just got like this. She was like, so like...
Oh, your dog?
Yeah.